Good afternoon, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lee County Commissioners to order. We'd like to welcome everybody here on this nice, almost spring-like afternoon. Thanks for coming out. We'd like to begin this afternoon with an invocation by Reverend Dr. Frazier and Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Let's bow his for a moment. Precious God, we thank you again for the privilege and opportunity for us to gather once again. God, we thank you for these commissioners who have gathered, the staff, and all of those citizens, God, who have come, concerns, with concerns about our community. We pray now, God, that you bless us as we go forward in deliberation, and also, God, we ask that you bless each of us as we come forward to talk and discuss things concerning the community and the county. So, God, we thank you for what you're going to do for us this evening. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Would anyone like to add any additional agenda items?
Madam Chair, I would ask that we add, based on the new business, for Mr. Charles Ritter to discuss fracking information.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reeves. I think just in looking at our agenda with the new business item B, and then the budget amendment under County Manager's Report for A with Ms. Mentor, let's move Ms. Mentor's budget calendar item from B to C and put Mr. Ritter in as item B under New Business. That's okay?
That's fine.
Okay? Any additional items to the agenda? Here motion to approve?
Don't move.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to public comments. Mr. Wall?
Hi, my name is Marvin Wall. Thank you for the opportunity to take two minutes and mention something about fracking also. I'm a resident of Lee County, but I come down here because I'm really concerned for the people of Lee County, what's about to transpire, hopefully not, but about to. The coal ash situation, which I'm not even going to try to get into, and then to consider fracking on top of that, we're talking about people's wells, their water, and everything else. We're talking about general well-being and health of the citizens of Lee County. And it should be noted that this is not a good situation for those citizens. I wanted to mention that the Southern Environmental Law Conference has started a lawsuit against the Mining and Energy Commission and the way it was appointed, which was unconstitutional. It's also uncon- therefore unconstitutional, the rules and laws that they came up with. My suggestion is to our legislature is that they go back to the drawing board and do it in a legal and proper way. Now, this lawsuit has been joined, will most likely be joined into the governor's lawsuit. So, even the governor is concerned about how this Mining and Energy Commission was appointed. I want to encourage Lee County, its citizens, its government representatives, to do anything they can to support this lawsuit, because it's your county and it's your water that is at stake here. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, was he not required to give his address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, if you could give your address for the record.
Sure. Yeah, it's 1116 Vanstone, that's V S Invicta, A N S T O N E Drive, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27603.
And you have that on the sign and sheet currently?
I do.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to all business. The update on security camera system at the Government Center, Mr. Edwards.
Good afternoon, Chair Don Rappel, other members of the board. If you refer to the summary paragraph on page forty of your packet, I wanted to bring you an update today on the security surveillance system that was approved at the November 3 regular meeting, just so that we're on the same page. We have Mr. Oden, Mr. Sloan, who weren't with us at that time. There were, had been several security concerns over the years, specifically the most recent months, that kind of spurred this surveillance system on. Mr. Crumpton was a catalyst to help us get the system implemented, and we appreciate the board's approval as well. In October, we put the project out for bid, and it's at ninety-nine point nine percent operation at this point. And so, I wanted to take today to just give you kind of a good view of it in operation, with the functions that it has. Have Al Epino with me here today from Security 101, the company that was chosen to implement the system. And without further ado, I'll grab the laptop and just kind of show you the system in action.
While Kyle's preparing to do that, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to provide this service to you. We really appreciate the opportunity, and we're going to do everything in our power to make you realize that this was a good idea and that you chose Lee County.
So, this is the software application that we run to view all the installed cameras. We have twenty-four cameras that were installed total. This is in all view right now, so you can just see all of the cameras that have been installed.
Excuse me one second.
Twenty-six, yes.
Excuse me one second.
Yes, sir.
Counselor, could you move your bottle of water, I think? It's like a little man when I...
So, I'll switch over right now. We've got, this is, as I said, the all view. We can switch over to three different views that we have that kind of shrink things down, so it's a little easier to view. The exterior cameras, so we have a view of what's now the Colts Building, one of both building entrances, and then down the alleyway, over where the HVAC systems are. Then we have the Social Services lower parking lot, the left-hand view and the right-hand view. And then we have both, both sides of the Carthage Street Social Services entrance.
Put one of the cameras up.
Sure.
That person that's walking through there.
Yeah, so if we want to see one of these live, you can, you can bring that up, and it'll clear if we zoom that in. You can see that it has a really nice quality, and facial recognition would not be an issue at all. But one of the...
That camera's only a two megapixel. All the other cameras, there's, there are two megapixel and five megapixel cameras everywhere. So, you can imagine how powerful a five megapixel is to be part of.
We'll grab one of those, one of the five megapixels. Yeah, that is a good one. That's one of my favorite views. We'll zoom this in. It'll clear in just a second. There we go.
This is hard, anybody would be hard pressed to step on your property in the future without you being able to identify them.
This is all motion recorded, so when any of the cameras pick up motion detection, they begin recording at that time. So, those are the exterior views. Here are the interior cameras that we have installed, the Hillcrest Main Lobby, Commissioner Lobby right outside the doors here, the Social Services Main Lobby, the customer waiting area at Social Services, the Health Main Lobby on second floor, and the Social Services fourth floor lobby. So, again, these are interior two-megapixel cameras.
Kyle, will you automatically, the front view, will you automatically landscape the trees, the bushes out there, add spring and some of that rolling?
Absolutely.
I mean, you're going to, that's something you'll take care of, or it won't obstruct any of the views?
No, no, we, we worked with Russell Spivey to make sure that all the landscaping that was in place wouldn't have any of the views obstructed, yeah. We'll definitely keep an eye on that stuff, just in case it starts to grow back up.
So, all of the, all of the interior cameras are two pixels? Two megapixels, that's correct. The exterior, the cameras on the outside of the building are a mixture of two and five megapixels, and then all the cameras that are in your parking lots are all five megapixel cameras, of which you have thirteen watching your parking lots.
So, we'll go to the parking lot views now. What's really nice about the parking lot cameras is, even though we have twelve actual views here, it's, it's only three physical cameras.
That can be twenty right sequence.
Yep, yep, we'll drag those over. But we'll expand one of these, just to give you an idea. One of these. Do a zoom. And so, we kind of start right here at the Government Center entrance, and it pans up to the right, and then we get all the way back out to, to the lot where the mental health facility is.
Is there, is there a view, Kyle, there at the mental health building where the parking, over for parking, I assume is?
That is, yeah. There's the, the mental health building back in the background, and we have a couple of different...
Yeah, I see now, I see now.
We have that view, and then this is just a direct adjacent view of that one.
There it is.
And we'll just go back to the all view. Are there any other questions on the cameras? Will we still have the software application up and running?
Just a quick question. If there would be an issue with one of the cameras, storms, bird, I don't know. But if you would have a problem, Mr. Edwards would just call you, and you're out of Raleigh?
Out of Raleigh.
Okay, so, come down in a day or so and repair that.
You have a five-year service agreement with us.
Right, right.
And obviously, we have been working on some minor issues that have cropped up because of the installation, and I'm sure that Kyle will tell you that we have been all over this, making sure that this thing works exactly like it's supposed to, to your specifications. And we won't let it go, we'll be a dog with a bone. We won't let go until it's nod to the no.
Thank you.
And then, the last thing that I would like to say, I would really like to praise Kyle about how good he has been during this entire process. I've done this for twenty-five years. Makes my life a lot easier when I have somebody that's as capable as he is. He already knows the software inside, now he knows it better than I do, for that matter. But anyway.
Exactly, thank you, Kurt.
I even made jests to him, and I would hire him to program my next system for his customer needs. But anyway, he's terrific. You guys have a great person working for him.
Super staff.
What type of data archiving do you have? Say something was to happen at night, et cetera. Is there backup?
Your server has a ten-terabyte storage capacity, which we approximate will be good for about three, four weeks of stored video at the rate and setting that we had set up. If you really needed to go further than that, we can always add an external storage device. We can create RAID five storage for you, if that's what you want. There's no limit to it. It's just a matter of what it is you want to do and how much you can pay, like everything else, of course. But meanwhile, I remember when I first came to talk to Kyle about this, I said, "Do you want to do it the inexpensive route, or do you want to do it right?" He said, "Let's do it right." And this is the system I came up with.
And Mr. Sloan, just to kind of further clarify what your question was, the specific settings that we have turned on right now are giving us, as Al mentioned, roughly fifteen days. We can go back. You know, we can always tweak those down a little bit to, to grow it out, but the original idea was that it would be mostly forensic in nature, so if we had an event, nine times out of ten, we're going to find out the next day, and then be able to go right back to footage, but it is something that can be tweaked.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to all business, item B. Update and recommendation on Sandley Park Fire, Mr. Crumpton.
Yes, ma'am. I've been working extensively with staff on reviewing the fire that occurred back in November at the Sandley Nature Center. Also been working with the Association on getting all our claim information in order so we could give you a review of what's going to transpire going forward. I've also had some inquiries about, you know, what, what we could do if we tried to move the facility. And so, in the memo that is attached, starting on page forty-five, I cover all of that. It's a lot of information. I did not expect the board to make a decision on whether they wanted to rebuild where they are today, or to build somewhere else in the park, but based on recommendation from the, our risk managers and our insurance company, they're recommending that we move as quickly as possible on asbestos remediation. And in your packet, we have a quote from Empiricon, a company out of Apex, for forty-seven thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars to remove all the asbestos from the building. The Association has paid us thirty-one thousand dollars. The check is coming in the mail to us at this time, along with the initial two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars to get started on repairs, if we so choose to do that. But we can't really do anything until we address the asbestos issue in the part of the building that was damaged. Their quote also included asbestos in the other areas of the building, and while they were in there, we're recommending that we go ahead and remove all asbestos, so it's not an issue in the future. So, you know, based on, you know, talking with some folks, we feel that that's a good quote for forty-seven thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars, two-thirds of it paid by the Association. So, if you're happy to answer any questions, obviously, that was a lot. We talked about, you know, what size building that we would rebuild, you know, if we went to another part of the park, we could probably deal with a little bit smaller building. This is a, the building that's down there was built in the nineteen-thirties. It's pretty inefficient. It leaked quite a bit, and obviously, they had a, had a problem with heating and air systems in the building, so just, you know, threw that out there for, for consideration based on some comments that were made. Obviously, the least expensive way to go for the county is to build where we are, rebuild an existing building, but whatever the pleasure the board is doing, then we gave you options to, to fund it.
May I ask you about the asbestos removal?
Yes, sir.
You just had one quote?
Yes, sir. This was a quote that was provided to the risk management folks at the Association of County Commissioners, and this is who they use for their asbestos removal when they have issues across the state.
Seventeen thousand dollars, the insurance company's going to take care of it.
Yes, sir. And that's because they've, you know, analyzed asbestos in the entire building, not just the part of the building that was damaged. We feel, we feel like as we get into reconstruction, if we, if we do that, there are going to be two issues with the building that are going to have to be addressed. One is ADA, and the other is the asbestos. And a lot of that's going to be up to Chris Riggins and his staff on what we're going to have to do to, to renovate the building.
I guess what I was asking, you just had one quote on there?
Yes, sir. They just took the one quote. Pretty specialized field in dealing with the, the fire damage with the asbestos removal.
Are there other folks around that do it?
I'm sure there are, but it's pretty specialized.
Any other discussion or questions?
To piggyback on, on the asbestos deal, you're not suggesting that we can't seek others to do this, you're just saying this is the only one they sent down.
Well, and if we were to seek it out, I'd have to develop specifications. I probably would have to get a environmental engineer involved and go through a, you know, a bidding process where this is to be classified as an emergency-type situation, where we're trying to build, put a building back in place for use from a fire. So, it just depends on, you know, there are other issues that need to be dealt with the building if the building, if the commissioners decide to rebuild where we are. As that building stays empty, it gets damp, we're not running AC or heat in the building, we have a potential for mold issues developing. So, to expedite the removal and to get the process started, because this is the first thing that has to happen before we do anything, if we were to demo the building, or if we're going to rebuild within the building, we have to remove the asbestos first.
If you decide to demo the building, I just want to go wait and have time, well, we'd have to look at the cause, but it just appears to me that if you're going to do something to this and spend this kind of money, you need more than one quote.
Discussion?
Well, I could, go ahead.
Mine's just going to go further than that, but go ahead and just continue with the asbestos, if that's where you are.
I'm just going to...
That probably is not a bad quote.
Pardon?
I said, "That's probably not a bad quote."
Well, I'm satisfied knowing that what we'd have to go through, as opposed to just accepting the one that we currently have. I'm fine with that quote.
My question is, even if we get the asbestos removed, then what kind of timeline do we have then to make a decision on whether we want to build where we are, or, or, or use the other option in moving it on the, on a high level out of the flood?
Well, you know, rebuilding would be quicker. Once we had all our plans in place and could bid, the reconstruction, you're looking at six to eight months. If we build new, because of, you know, where we would go, we'd probably have quite a bit of grading, that kind of thing to do, plus we're going to have to evaluate architects. You're probably looking closer to twelve months.
So, actually, in actuality, we were saying that just get the asbestos out now, and then we can sit down and have some more discussion about what we want to do for this repairing or renovating or moving to another location.
Our, if we're going to rebuild right where we are, we need to get going, or we're going to have more problems with the building because of how long it has sat empty, no air conditioning, no heat, water, you know, from the, from putting out the fire in the building. We've got a lot to do to, to make sure we don't have other issues with the building, and we would need to get going on that.
How much is this affecting your day-to-day operation mix?
Well, during the winter, it's not as bad as it will be during the summer. You know, during the summer, we're going to have summer camps out there, you know, if you've got a building out there, we're going to have issues, but, you know, the insurance does pay for a temporary building. To be out there, it isn't going to be anything real pretty, but, you know... You can operate it out of it, so...
It'll be something similar to modular, you know, correct?
Right. It'd be a modular building, like what you see at schools.
Okay, well, I, I think, you know, in conversation, as, as you see in your agenda at our next meeting, we'll have two proposals to consider, the renovation and the new building.
And I know...
You're asking for the asbestos, or not?
Yes.
Right, right, we didn't even do that.
Madam Chair, I move that we move forward with asbestos abatement. Either way, it's got to be removed, and I move that we move on that.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Okay, new business. The deed of easements to the City of Sanford for sidewalks, Mr. Crumpton again?
Yes, ma'am. You know, last month, I didn't, I didn't get to say much at all, so tonight, it's my turn.
Sure, sure.
We've received a request from the City of Sanford as part of their bonds that recently passed for the Streetscape Walkscape project. They want to put sidewalks on three of the properties that we own. One is on Witherspoon Street in front of the Arts Center to provide walking access around that. As you know, there's a basketball, a basketball court there, and there's a lot of foot traffic. They would like to, like to make that more of a walkable area. And then, the other big project is to create sidewalks in front of the OT Sloan Park, which this board has discussed, or the prior board discussed quite a bit, with having problems with people walking through yards and that kind of stuff. They want to address that sidewalk there, and then also address the sidewalk in front of Lee County Senior High School property. We own the Lee County Senior High School property right now, but we do have a, a operational lease with the high school, so we added the Board of Education as a signator to that. So, even though we approved that tonight, we're going to ask that the Board of Education approve it as well. But I think everybody's pretty much on, on board with improving the walkability around OT Sloan Park, so I'll be happy to answer any other questions, but I think this is pretty straightforward and something we've looked at before. The city is, is bearing all the cost.
Wasn't there a money issue on that part, too?
There was, as far as them paying us for the easements, or...
No, we're doing the actual project.
I think they're short on some of the work they want to do downtown, but I don't think they're short on this, these sections. I think this, you know, they have reiterated their interest in moving forward.
Any other discussion? Okay.
Do you already have a luggage?
No, no, no. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, item B under New Business, Mr. Ritter. And I put at each of your seats, I hand out the heat report for us. Welcome.
Okay.
You have ten minutes.
Thank you for having me today, I appreciate it. My name is Charles Ritter. I live in the northern, extreme northern end of Chatham County. I have a Cary address, but it is in Chatham.
Okay.
And I came down here today, and first of all, I'm, my background is I'm a retired aerospace engineer. I'm not a crazy environmentalist, okay? And I deal in facts, and I only get my facts from legitimate sources. And I came here because Lee County, I want to discuss the impact of fracking on Lee County, which has two unique things going on here, the Jonesboro Fall line and shale coming to the surface. But first, fracking. It pumps millions of gallons of toxic fracking chemicals into the ground per well. That is legal per the Halliburton loophole. About thirty percent of it returns to the surface, and if any radioactive elements blow the surface will come up, such as radium, radon, et cetera, and that has to be disposed of. And there are hundreds and hundreds of reports of fracking causing water contamination, methane gas, gas, air pollution, and earthquakes in other states, not in North Carolina, because it hasn't started here. And fracking is exempt from the clean... And fracking is exempt from the Clean Air and Clean Water Act, which doesn't make any sense to me, but that's the way it is. And the EPA is to rule whether fracking is safe or not in twenty sixteen. But we're starting permitting in North Carolina in a couple of months, as early as April, depending upon what happens in the legislature. So we kinda have the, the cart before the horse, so to speak. Uh, many countries, uh, have, have tried, many areas in the world have tried fracking and have, uh, decided to ban it. There are thirteen countries that have full or partial bans, one state has a, a total ban. There are two counties in North Carolina that have, have put bans on, and there are over four hundred local ordinances banning fracking. And the important thing to know about fracking is it's horizontal fracking. Goes down and then it can go horizontally two miles, that's the limit of technology. And why is that important to Lee County? How does it impact you? Well, first of all, Harris Lake, which spans Chatham and Wake Counties, is less than two miles from Lee County. It's, it's very close and it is the largest repository of spent control rods in the country. And the Nuclear Regulatory Commission and Duke Energy, they have a one point three mile controlled area around the power plant. But not around Harris Lake, which provides the cooling. And it's a dangerous situation to begin with because it's only two miles from the Jonesboro Fault Line. And throughout the country, there have been hundreds of cases of, uh, fracking induced earthquakes, okay? Uh, Ohio, Oklahoma, whatever, areas that didn't have earthquakes, you start fracking and all of a sudden there are hundreds of them. Um, and fracking, the, the way it in- induces an earthquake, it's, it's a lot of water under extremely high pressure. And what, what a, an earthquake is, is basically there's a fault and it's, it's under stress. And fracking lubricates that fault and allows the land to shift. Now, if that should happen near Harris Lake and the level should go down, if, you'd lose the cooling for the control rods and it'd be a nuclear incident. Now, you haven't heard about this yet because this situation with the power plant and the, and the lake being so close to a fault line. Um, it's, uh, the juxtaposition of, uh, of, uh, three things which when put together is, is the perfect storm. Okay, so any fracking near the, the fault line would be, uh, could create a problem. Um, the second issue is, um, and I got all of this information from the North Carolina, um, geological surveys. That, uh, the, the shale actually, which, which is what's gets fracked, actually comes to the surface in Chatham and Lee Counties. And if you, if you inject, uh, toxic fracking fluids into that shale, it will contaminate wells. Wells typically go anywhere from twenty-eight feet to a thousand feet, so it's, it's, it's in the range and will contaminate the, uh, the water table. Other potential impacts are, if you contaminate the water, it contaminates agriculture, lives, livestock, there've been reports of deformed births. Um, the equipment is very heavy, okay, to transport these millions of gallons of fracking fluid and it destroys roads. In Texas, uh, one county spent, spends a hundred million dollars a year, and yes, that's a heavy, there's a lot of fracking going on there, but you're talking big numbers. It absolutely destroys the roads. And in, in other states where there's fracking, uh, they have denied mortgages and they have denied homeowners' insurance. Because if you're in an area where your house has all of these things going on, the water is contaminated, the roads are ruined. Um, no one's gonna insure you or, or give you, give a mortgage. And in areas, um, in different parts of the country, uh, the, uh, fracking has caused a twenty-three point seven percent decrease in housing values. That's assuming you can sell your house, there are, there's cases, I know of one in Texas, it was on Sixty Minutes. Fellow had this two million dollar house and he had to walk away from it because no one would buy it. So that's what you're up against. Now, what can be done? It is illegal to ban fracking in North Carolina, okay, that is very clear. However, there's an organization which was previously mentioned, SELC, Southern Environmental Law Center. It will provide words which basically say citizens have a bill of rights for clean air and clean water. If you take their words and turn it into an, I guess an ordinance you'd call it. If you do that, if it's challenged by the state, they will go to court for you. They have been very successful in doing this here in, outside of North Carolina, and these are the same people when you see, um, uh, um. The, the, uh, the ads about coal ash, uh, the, uh, the lawsuits, uh, they filed a lawsuit, uh, as, as Marvin Waltz, uh, mentioned. Okay, they've been very active in, in trying to protect, uh, North Carolina against coal ash and now they're trying to do it against fracking. I've already worked with, uh, both Chatham and Wake Counties, they're both looking into doing this here. Um, so far, nothing, but again, it's the beginning of the year. And, uh, all I can do is urge you to at least get in contact with SELC, the contact information is there. Uh, Mary McLean Ashville is, uh, uh, very accessible. And, uh, she'd be willing to provide you with information as to how you could put an ordinance in place and protect Lee County. And at the bottom of the handout is my, uh, address, I'd be glad to provide any additional information or provide any, um, backup information for anything I've said. Um, any questions, I'd be glad to feel questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ritter?
Yeah, what are your sources on all this information? Because, uh, in all honesty, I've seen this before, I've read this before, I've researched some of it, some of it's nonsense, uh.
What such as?
Uh, well, pumps five to ten million gallons of toxic carcinogens.
Yeah.
When you talk about the total percentage of the so-called fluids, most of it's water and sand. And then about ninety-eight percent of it.
Yeah.
And then two or three percent of it is.
I agree.
The benzines and mineral oils and diesel and certain concepts.
Right, okay, which you don't want in your drinking water, keep going.
Yeah, I'm just, uh, there's hundreds of thousands of wells out there and you've got a few hundred wells that are allegedly contaminated. Um, earthquakes, it's a great, great line, I think that's fantastic. I lived in Ohio from the, just a few miles from the Perry Nuclear Plant. And after I left, they had an earthquake, the nuclear plant's still there and it's still operating. Uh, there's earthquakes in California and have nuclear plants in California and they're still operating. Uh, so I'm not quite sure how earthquakes are able to do it.
Are they two miles, are they two miles from a fault line?
As a matter of fact, the Cary Plant, or excuse me, the Perry Plant was off of, uh, not less than a mile, off Lake Erie. And they built a nuclear plant right there on the coast, so. I'm just.
That's not a fault line, Lake Erie.
No, no, the, the fault line that caused the earthquake, it was less than a mile off the Perry Nuclear Plant. So it's still here, it's still operating and it wasn't damaged. And the same thing with our plant here, it's not gonna suffer any consequences of an earthquake.
So Lake, Lake Erie, I doubt if the, the, the level of Lake Erie would go down, but Harris Lake is much smaller, so I don't think you compare, you can compare the two. And in terms of the thirty percent toxic fluids, that's what returns to the surface, not the percentage of, of, uh, chemicals. It's, the chemicals are a very low percentage, but they're very toxic.
And, and as far as the water in the EPA rules on clean air and clean water act about, that's surface water. And if you haven't been to a well site or seen pictures of well sites, our, our urgency manager went to a couple of well sites up in Pennsylvania. And the degree of prevented, preventive measures, shielding and such to prevent water from running off the site is incredible. And that covers the Clean Water and Clean Air Act because that's surface water.
Well, North Carolina had two hundred and seventeen thousand comments from the public. And our Mining and Energy Commission incorporated less than one percent, they are totally unsafe. Two hundred and seventeen thousand comments.
One on the fault line too.
Okay, it's not safe. Anyone else?
Mr. Ritter.
Yeah.
As far as the, uh, shale being close to the surface in Lee and Chatham County, where did you find that data at?
Um, there is a North Carolina Geological Survey that, um, shows that, let me see. Can I, can I get, show you something, I have it with me?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, I've always, I actually owned a farm on the river and I always felt like the shale was almost within eight to ten foot of the surface. And in all the arguments that I continually hear from people supporting fracking, they keep saying it's five thousand feet below the ground. And I'm really, I think it's misinformation that the public continues to get.
It is in other states, that's what I said, we have a unique geology here. This is, uh, this is derived from the North Carolina Geological Survey and I can provide you with the original. And what it shows is here's the water table, here's the shale in red and they intersect and they intersect right near.
The deep river, up, up in there, yes, we, we, I've seen that, yes.
Uh, Chatham and Lee, and, uh, this, this is, uh, this is a study that was done and it's, it's not my study, it's not my drawing, okay?
Right.
If, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Ritter, just maybe if you could email that to all the commissioners.
I don't have this in email form.
Oh, okay.
But we can, I can have it printed, if you have it printed here.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll work something else, I, I'll contact you and, and we can make sure all the commissioners can see it, okay, okay.
Anyone else?
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Okay, presentation and approval of budget calendar for fiscal year twenty fifteen sixteen, Ms. Mentor.
Good afternoon, you have before you the, um, tentative budget calendar for this, um, fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen budget. Uh, we will be kicking off the budget process tomorrow with the department heads by presenting them this calendar, if you approve it. Other items you'll note, um, we have February ninth is your budget kickoff session. And then the departments will be working diligently, we hope to present to you the budget on May fourth in the meeting. Uh, Mr. Cumpden will be doing that presentation. You will see that on May fifteenth is the deadline for the schools to submit their budget, so if they do submit it early, we should be able to make the May fourth deadline. If they choose to not submit it until May fifteenth, we may have to adjust our calendar accordingly. We have, um, tentatively scheduled one budget work session on May eleventh, but we have the period from May fifth to June first as time for you to hold work sessions. We hope to adopt the budget on June first, but of course, it has to be adopted by June thirtieth.
Okay. Discussion on dates, times with everybody? Okay. Any other comments? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the calendar as submitted? Okay. Any more? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the county manager's report, but the budget amendment, Ms. Lintner, here, please.
Hey, you have before you the budget member, budget amendment number nine for this fiscal year. And this budget amendment, we're appropriating the six thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars of additional funding received from the state for family planning program that you represented last, um, meeting. Um, those monies will be used for the sister love program. There's also a thousand dollars allocated in that appropriate, um, in that allotment also that was not presented to you that meeting. That thousand dollars to be allocated by the state for birth control methods. Then we're also appropriating forty-five thousand four hundred seventeen dollars from fund balance for a project that you approved on November seventeenth, um, twenty fourteen. For the environmental health program to come on board with the Energy Gov Electronic Permitting System. It's also including converting paper documents to digital, um, through, uh, Lee County Industries. And installing equipment and vehicles for mobile technology implementation. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Okay, we've got a motion to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you ma'am, I guess you're up next again.
Okay, um, you have in your package the monthly financial report for December twenty fourteen. Um, as I always tend to remind you, we have, we do run three months behind on sales tax revenues, so do not be overly alarmed by that number. Tax collections through December show collections being approximately three point two percent behind the same period last year. However, I did meet with Ms. Yao, um, last week and we were looking much better through the period in January that we've gotten to. So, um, the only year I'm concerned about is collection of twenty thirteen prior year taxes and Ms. Yao has been reviewing that with her staff. And there just seems to be a lot of varying outstanding bills that, and they're fixing to send out foreclosure notices. So hopefully, once those go out, or pre-foreclosure notices, make sure I say that correctly. Um, and that should prompt some more payments on that. But, um, and we also, when you're looking at this year's number versus last year, do remember that for about three months, we had double collections on motor vehicles. Because of the old system and the new system, so that is skewing our numbers a little bit this year. Um, as far as its expenditure goes, we still have s- few departments that are running over, most of that's due to just timing of things, um, dues, maintenance contracts, et cetera. Of course, as I've explained to you, juvenile detention is the main one I'm concerned about, we will continue to monitor that. Um, sales tax collections are attached through October twenty fourteen. Um, we are slightly behind sales tax budgets, um, however, it's still a little, we're only three or four months in, it's still a little early to panic, so, um. But we are seeing some growth over the prior year, so that's a good thing, where last year we were pretty flat. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
I actually have one, but it's the, uh, health, health question, how many vehicles will that, uh, forty-five thousand they care?
There's just a small portion of that forty-five thousand that was for the vehicles, let me go back and see if I can find that number for you quickly. Kyle worked on this with them, so it's for three trucks and the portion that's for vehicles was about twenty-one hundred dollars, just raised.
All right. Do you know if he had other vehicles that need the same equipment or?
I think there's only three vehicles assigned to environmental help because they have a limited number of staff. So if we were to start growing again in Lee County and having to add staff, we would probably need to add ten more vehicles.
All right, thank you.
Um, not to put Mary on this, but just a ballpark number of the pre-foreclosure notices, do you know about how many of those would be? I mean, no. No, that's okay, that's fine, that's, okay, okay.
Could I ask a question, just because I, I honestly don't know. If you get to the point of where you foreclose because of taxes, what happens to that property?
At least, ma'am, it's not a short answer.
Well, I mean, the reason I'm asking is I received a call this week and I think, uh, Andre probably also, or Dr. Connect received a call. Um, where in Carolina Trace, they were concerned about their, um, POA, yeah, where.
I got this phone call.
Okay. So, you know, I'm, I'm just asking strictly from the standpoint.
I just wanna say, but he did mention you guys helped him out a lot, so I just wanna throw that out there.
Yeah, he said he was very well satisfied and I was glad to hear that. But I was just curious as far as to if we.
But we weren't surprised to hear that.
No.
We're happy to hear that, we weren't surprised to hear that.
But, moving on, if, um, if the county does foreclose and we end up with the property, are we responsible for those dues?
Yes, sir, we are.
Yes.
So, okay. Yes.
We've been paying dues on three properties?
Yeah.
We own three properties in Carolina Trace right now where we're paying dues and we can't even use the pool.
So my question is, what do we do with the properties, I mean, do we just own them or do we put them up for sale or?
No, sir, that, none of them came with a golf membership, but. Um, we, they're on our website as surplus property. Um, we have looked at several different ways to try to dispose of real estate and, uh, none of them are easy. So under our laws, which is one of those things that I would love to see changed in our legislature, is the ability of us to. Just put a for-sale sign out there and, and, and try to, try to sell it that way or something. We own a hundred and sixty parcels now, thereabouts, like, don't quote me exactly, but it's, it's close to a hundred and sixty parcels. That, um, we would like to sell, um, to adjoining property owners, anybody, to get them back at the tax scrolls and, um. You know, we've contacted folks, we've have, we have a detailed list, we have, we've talked to realtors, we've talked to, um, auctioneers. We've looked at everything to try to get rid of it.
That's, that's something that, you know, the notebook that we have with the surplus properties probably need to get one.
Okay.
To the commissioners that didn't get one of those when they were passed out, that would be.
In several of the properties, we end up owning jointly with the city. And several of the properties, we end up owning jointly with the city. And, uh, you know, some of the properties that we foreclosed on in the city, the houses aren't worth anything, the city will go in and tear them down, and then we just, we give the property to the city, and then they become responsible for maintaining it. So, um, there have been quite a few, um, dilapidated foreclosures. At some point, people just say it's not worth it anymore and can't maintain it, and we end up owning it, so... You know, no one goes and bids, um, on the foreclosure, and we're the ones that end up with it.
Yeah, we do send out notices to surrounding property owners before it goes to sale.
Kind of giving them first right of refusal since they're adjoining.
Well, just to let them know is called that.
So his question was, how does it, you proceed with all that? If a person doesn't pay, right, you asked that, so if a person doesn't pay, your procedures are, how's that work?
Um, it goes to our foreclosure attorney, and then they have to notify the owners or anybody that has any interest in the property. Um, we collect a lot, most of the time, we're going to collect the money before it ever goes to foreclosure. But you'll have some that do eventually end up at sale. But it's, so it's not a, you know, it's not a real fast process once we start foreclosure proceedings. It takes a while.
And then how long do, to get the money to you? The property owner, you give them the notice, they have, how much time?
Well, we ask them to get it to us, I think. Um, the first notice probably says within, um, probably those days or less, we try to promptly repay it, uh, before we ever send it to our foreclosure attorney.
Because we start incurring cost with the foreclosure attorney, and the bill goes up because not only do they owe us the back taxes, but now they're going to owe us the attorney fees as well to bring it current. But then higher than the tax, that's why, that's why some of the property, you just, you, you just begging the people to keep pl- paying because you don't want to own the property.
And it's not our, it's not our first means of collection. We try to find money in a bank account or through garnishment of wages. I mean, there's, there's other collections, proceedings that we try before we go to foreclosure. That's our last avenue on real estate. We also review any time we're making payments through accounts tables, the list of outstanding taxes or taxpayers, my staff is, you know, strapped to review that. And if we catch somebody who owes us taxes, we'll take them ahead.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, county manager.
Your report. Ma'am, ma'am, the chair, my report starts on page one fifty-five, and, uh, I know the board's been waiting for the Eagle Project rec- recognition, but the Eagle Project recognition went up in flames at the Sanley Park. So that was their only copy of all the projects that had been done. We're in Steve's office.
John.
So we are having to go back and recreate, uh, all of that, and have asked all the area troops to send us the, uh, information. And, um, I'm trying to work with council up in Raleigh to, uh, get that information as well, so... So we're on the plan B to, to get that done. Um, I'm, I'm happy to announce, I guess I'm happy, um, that we received a very large donation, um, on somebody's behalf, uh, to do the dog park. So the funds have all been raised privately. Um, close to twenty five thousand dollars was raised privately to do the park at OT Sloan. So, um, it, I talked to the person that, that wrote those two checks, and I know that he's very excited that he was able to write those checks in his, um, in his wife's name. And, uh, we will make that announcement and who that was in, in a future meeting. But for now, we'll just let y'all know that it was a couple of big checks for us, so appreciate that. This board back in October made a request to the DOT to do a study, uh, request to, uh, study the speed limit in the industrial park. It had never been requested before. And so the speed limit throughout the park on all the roads is fifty-five miles an hour. So, um, we had made the request that in the existing areas where there was a building, that it'd be thirty-five, and they recommended forty-five after their study, and left the new Clyde Ryan Road speed limit at fifty-five since there are no facilities located along it. So I would let you know that. Um, we just talked about the budget kickoff workshop. Uh, we'll also talk about the capital improvement plan, um, at the February ninth meeting. The Community College Board of Trustees will be here. And I've been having a lot of discussions with their staff about, uh, proceeding with the projects that were just approved in the bonds, so... Should be a good planning meeting with them. Still working on other joint meetings with the Board of Education, City of Sanford and Town on Broadway. And, uh, we're probably due for a economic development meeting as well for an update there. The NACO Legislative Goals Conference in Washington DC is February twenty first through the twenty-fifth. Um, I'm sure that snow season in Washington and our capital. So y'all have a good time, if it's going. And then there are reports attached, and then there's the calendar of upcoming events. That is all I have.
Commissioner comments? Mr. Smith?
Just, just a question for John Agardy. I was looking through the, uh, construction plans and such. I see that Veterans Affairs Clinic is being moved up to Tramway Road.
Yes, sir. I think there was some sewer issues there. So I think at Tramway Road, there's not any sewer issues. I'm not involved in it, Commissioner Smith. I'm watching it just like you are.
Would it be something that we would want to have a presentation to the board on?
I think when we meet with the city, um, you know, we have the inter-local committee meeting next week, I think. It'd be a good question for the city to, if you would like for me to add that to the agenda.
The agenda.
I'd be happy to do so. That way their staff can explain what's going on, because we haven't been involved. Um, I know John Sandrock stays in touch with them and, but as far as the planning and trying to get the sewer to the, the previous site, I know it was quite an obstacle.
Anything else, Mr. Smith?
Just to remind you that the Tax and Spend Show is on tonight, so make sure you watch it.
The nine o'clock show, is that true? Um, Dr. Connect?
All right, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Becher?
I just have one thing. I want to, I, I promised, uh, Commissioner Smith that I would get some information to him. And I just wanted to let this board know that I did get the information, and I'm going to email it to him, so, um, so he can have, um... Ms. Watkins, they had to share with me her concerns and what she came up with. Commissioner Smith said that he will just, be happy just to have an email, so I'm going to email it to him with the, with the information.
This is the Johnson Lee Hornet?
The Johnson Lee Hornet information.
Okay, all right. Mr. Sloan? Ms. R, Mr. Reeves?
I just had a question about the, the Sanley Park deal. Is it necessary for us to address that before we get into the, uh, budget process?
Yes, sir. Based on the condition of the building, I think we're, you know, whatever we're going to do with it, we need to move with it quickly.
The twelfth probably needs to be our final decision.
The second, February second.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, the second, I'm sorry, yes.
On which way we, we're going?
Yes, sir.
Brand new, you're talking what, one point, one million dollars?
Yes, sir. And after you subtract out the, the insurance payments, it's going to be net seven fifty, around seven fifty to the county.
And you mentioned in the memorandum the possibility of having some monies from the sale of the, um...
Lift station.
Lift station, yeah.
Yes, sir. We had originally talked about using that money for broadband going out to the industrial park.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, we, there are some other discussions on broadband right now, which may get it out there less expensively. We may have a partner, um, in the telecommunications industry that would like to go along with us on that, uh, which is what we've been looking for. And so we, I am currently working on that with Kyle. But, um, that's something that, you know, we need to cut, keep under wraps for right now.
Okay. Are, are we going to have some idea what the dollar figure is for the lift station that we may consider applying?
We sold it for eight hundred and... Pardon?
I think it's eight hundred.
Eight hundred thousand, excuse me.
I'd be inclined for replacing the building simply because of the energy costs that this one now consumes, and it's not efficient, so a newer building would be energy efficient and therefore probably cheaper for the taxpayers down the road.
What, what would be the cost? Is it two twenty-nine is what we can get from the insurance?
Well, there, there are several different payments that's coming from the insurance. One is the replacement of contents, um, which is fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars. There's the ADA upgrade, which is seventy-five thousand. And then the actual construction, what they call the depreciated value, at two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So you end up, you know, around three seven, the, the cash out from the insurance company. And I'm using round numbers.
Okay, that's fine, that's okay. I, it's, it's on the-
It's in the report, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's in the report. I just, uh, with, uh, this technology that I have, you can't get back as quick as you want to.
So with that eight hundred, you do that, the one point?
Get what the-
Yeah, it would be right there.
Okay, um, a couple of things, um, from my end. Um, we are meeting with the city for inter-local committee. And as Mr. Compton said, you know, I think that is an appropriate time to get a presentation about the vet clinic, um, and, and exactly where they're going now and, and the timeline and that thing, type of thing. And I was just wanting to get some indication from the rest of the board about other things that they would like for us to discuss with the city. Not to put you on the spot, but-
I'd like to re, I'd like for you to remind them that, you know, when this whole Tramway project started, we were behind on all the information steps.
Right.
Uh, and I guess that falls to, uh, who's shop now?
Um...
Who would be keeping us posted on that?
Marshall, perhaps.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Just better communication or updates to us.
So I'd like to get that update on the veterans place before your meeting.
Okay.
As part of our contractual agreement.
Right. And I would also, you know, I would love to at least get, um, maybe a monthly report about the buggy factory, you know, where we are. Uh, I think that's too much to ask. Just sort of a monthly update.
Well, that's technically what we had talked about, that, uh, Ridwell was not providing, we asked that to be provided in the future.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss with them the possibility of, um, water being supplied to the Lee's Chapel area. I've had calls about that.
Okay.
I think there's concern with bored under the railroad and is that capable, et cetera. But I'd like to discuss that, and then I'd also like to discuss some fire hydrants on, uh, forty-two east proximity to the church.
Okay.
Because I know that was a commitment made by the city when they, um, run the water line down Buckhorn. And I've been told-
I think we, I think we discussed that.
You discussed that at Mike, yeah, that's sensitive.
I've been told that, uh, hydrant is purchased, but I want to see it put in.
Now, there was nothing.
No, sir, I don't think the hydrant has been purchased, and, um, there were some-
Let's add that to the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
What was the other area?
Lee's Chapel.
Le, the Lee's Chapel area for water supply?
Lord, 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 in that, in that area.
And then the fire hydrants on forty-two, and-
Primarily the one in Buckhorn.
Right, and forty-two.
Church.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we had a long discussion with the city about, about the fire hydrants along that road.
And, and Mr. Smith has done a great job. I mean, he's, he's got the information, and I, I need to get that from you. Yeah, I, I need to get that from you.
When the line was originally installed by the county, it was not those, they were placing hydrants at a certain, uh, distance. And so there was never one put in that area.
Yeah.
And therefore, there is not one. And to put one in there now would not meet the city's guidelines for putting one in there. So the responsible party to put one in there was basically, we were told, the county would have to pay to put that in there. And so we were concerned that it would set a precedent that whoever wanted a fire hydrant, the county would just start putting fire hydrants randomly across the county.
That wasn't the initial agreement.
No, not, we're having to move it up.
No, there was some communication, I guess, when the water lines were being extended, that some, some areas would get hydrants, and it didn't pan out for whatever reason. Maybe there wasn't enough money, or, or, um, didn't meet the guidelines, so they didn't get the hydrants. And of course, there's probably been development in the county since we got out of the water business, and there are probably some areas that, that would warrant hydrants. But that's what's, one of those things that was not covered in the, in the sale of the water system to the city. Basically, extension of water was not covered in, in the contract when the system was sold, period.
Paid for last, or so?
Yes, sir. We had to go get grants and, and extend that water up North Plank Road.
I think that, um, the same thing applies to the Pocket community, um, and the Poplar Springs out in, uh, in that area. There was a young lady that contacted me about trying to get water down that road. I think they stopped about maybe fifty yards from her house. And then down that road, uh, there's no water supply there. So I think we got another issue there as well, so...
Okay. Anything else for the, um, joint meeting with the city?
Are there any other spots that you're aware of that hydrants need replaced or supposed to be placed, uh, all over?
Yeah, I think if you talk, yeah, if you talk to the fire districts like, you know, Mr. Smith has, they, they lay it out pretty, um...
What, what, what question? Are you going to make that a part of your meeting?
I know it's discussed at our, it came here, actually, we even went as far as having discussions in the board of directors about us, you know, putting it in our budget to have them put in because of the benefit to the citizens and the dropping the fire insurance rating helps homeowners' insurance enormously.
But we got the map, let it, make that a part of your material, so that we're all on the same-
Yeah, Fire Advisory Board would be the best place to take that.
That's where we started, that's where it started from. The city has pretty much controlled the water, so it's one of those... They control the water, it's like out west when they had the water wars. Well, we know that when we get out of the water business, so...
But I still think they ought to have a copy of whatever we have.
Right, I mean, I think it would be more, making it part of our agenda just to bring it up and say we're revisiting that issue to see what we can do. Okay, um... Sure, sure.
I, I do know that Shane has all that information, too.
Okay.
He's got that, uh, matter of fact, as, as well as, um, Don Costas has that information as well. No, I think the information was provided to you.
Yeah, and it was. Okay, um, two other points, um, for me. Uh, I'm going to pass out an amended... Yes, yes, yes. Okay, um, and, uh, I'm, I'm handing out an amended board and committee meetings list, um, and doing my mea culpa to some, um, department heads and board chairs, because when I made the appointments, I was trying to make it easy, um, and wound up making it more complicated by doing in a, a, a main member- by doing an, a, a main member and then an alternate to boards. But some of the bylaws did not allow alternates. So some of you that had alternate positions now are free to have other plans those days. And that, that's, um, totally my fault. Thankfully, the clerk caught that. Um, but, but not in time for us to get a, a true sense of things. Um, and just one more thing, um, the manager and I have been talking about, uh, doing, I know some of you don't like this word, but some type of a retreat with the board. Um, we've got new board member, um, um, and a lot of things seem to be tidal waving onto the county. We've got the, um, city getting ready to launch, um, things with their, um, bond approval. Then we've got CCCC. We have fracking and coal ash and, and other needs in the county that we talk about. Um, and we're getting ready to go into budget time. So I was going to try to get, take the temperature of the board. We have looked at what we can tell is everyone's schedule, you know, some of the things like your class that's coming up this weekend. We know, we know some, some of the, um, times that we can't meet and I'm trying to go around everybody's work schedule and stuff. Uh, it, ugh, it kind of comes down to Friday afternoon and evenings or Saturday. Um, and, um, not, not to make it sound unprofessional, but we, my suggestion to the manager is we try to make it very casual and relaxed and maybe not fun, but, you know, as comfortable as possible, um, so that we can kind of get focused. I just felt like, um, from my standpoint, as, as the new board was formed, um, we had a lot of things going on right from the get-go and didn't really have a chance to, um, come together and, and, and get focused on things. So just some comments, guidance, suggestions?
Innovation Center has a nice courtroom.
Okay, okay. Good deal. Okay, now here's the really dicey part. The first Saturday that it seems like at least the manager, myself and the clerk could be available, and I even hate to bring it up, is Valentine's Day. But if we could do it like from nine to two, then, I mean, I don't know. Don't want to mess up anybody's Valentine's Day weekend.
Won't be much love in that room.
Well, I know, that's, that's...
I think that would be a great theme for today.
Yeah, that's, that's what the manager said was, you know, we, we, we would all be kind of in this, you know, Valentine's mentality of just, you know, love and kindness. Not happening. Okay, all right. Um, how about, um, the, the Friday afternoon evening prior, the thirteenth? Say start at four and do, you know, you can't do that, Kirk. Okay. Can anybody want to throw out some other dates while I have all of you together? Because Gayne will, I know it's like her and cats for her. Anybody?
Probably have some dates when we come out in February.
Okay, well, we'll try to get some dates out to you then, um, before then because, you know, we'll have to make arrangements for trying to set up, um, a facilitator and, you know, just getting the location and that kind of thing. I don't want to, I don't want to let it go too far because I would really like to do this before we get too deep into budget session. Okay? All right. Well, um, Mr. Sloan?
I move we go into closed session to consult with the attorney to protect attorney-client privilege per North Carolina general statute forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven eight three.
Okay, we are now in closed session. Thank you very much.